State pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the New Kent County School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Kent County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and two only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the New Kent County School Board.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the certification of the closed session?
I move that we approve the certification of the closed session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed. We will move into new business and the first item that we're going to be talking about tonight is healthcare renewal.
Yes, so somebody who was joining here. We also have Matt Davis from McGriff Insurance, he will take us through. Matt, are you there with us?
I am, thank you Brian.
All right, so I'll turn to Matt. Okay, all right, and hopefully you guys can see the PowerPoint presentation, I'm gonna walk you through it this evening. Good evening and thank you for having me in to join your meeting tonight, I apologize for not being able to be there in person. Madam Chairman, Board Members and Superintendent Nichols and the New Kent County Public Schools Management Team, I hope you and your families are doing well during these uncertain times. That being said, we do have some good news for you tonight, and if you flip to the next page, we can get started. So, the renewal is calling for a, sorry, I'm trying to blow them out, a .61 decrease to the current funding amounts with the $110,000 specific stop loss. The actual renewal is calling for a 3.4% decrease, but since New Kent is funded about 3% below expected, and given what we're dealing with in the current environment, we thought it would be best to keep rates the same as what they are today, and that would be about 1.61% above the expected liability rates. The other piece of that information is that the reinsurance rates are not final until July, or right around July 15th. That's a change in the Anthem policy with regard to reinsurance, that they don't finalize it until they get nine months of claims data, which from a risk standpoint, I'm sure you can understand that the more information they have, the better they can project the renewals. It also brings them in line with what the other carriers do, so that is somewhat of a change. Could the rates go, the reinsurance rates go up? Yes, we have not seen that in the central Virginia market yet, we've seen it out in the western part of the state, but very limited. The large claims that drive the renewal, and typically they equate to anywhere from 40% to 60% of your total experience. In the past 12 months, you've had 27 claims over 25,000, you had five over the stop loss of 110,000 with 233,000 being written off. As a comparison, the prior 12 months or the prior period, if you will, 22 claims over 25,000 with four breaching the stop loss of 100,000, and Anthem submitted 296,000 to the reinsurance contract. Interesting piece of information, of the 612 members that filed claims, 65% of them had less than $1,000 in claims. That is not atypical for what we see for every group, it's usually between 65% and 75%. And then you had 81 that did not file any claims at all, which is not what you want, because you want them to get their preventative care at the bare minimum. Your claims by relationship has much improved, and when we have talked in past years, you've had a significant number of spousal claims, which is not all bad, but if you have a lot of them, it does lend itself to not very positive claims experience, but yours is 22.7, and for the employees is 61.5, so that's running very well. We did bid alpha medical this year, we did get two responses from United and Aetna, and Cigna and Optima declined the quote. The United and Aetna were not competitive, they were slightly above what your renewal As I go through these, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, but I'll pause between each slide, just to make sure we don't miss any questions.
So with the bidding, did Anthem bid also, or are they, you're not listed as in the group before that the bids went out to?
They did, they did bid as well. They did, they went through the process as well.
Okay, thanks.
So, and, yep, and they submitted their renewal as part of their bid. Great question.
Just so we can clarify that, it's my understanding, this is Gail, Mr. Davis, it's my understanding that, that when it first went out to bid, we, they did not have the opportunity, and we did not have a substantial number of people, of companies who opted in to bid, so it went back out to bid, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
To be clear, yes.
So that we can clarify what, what the problem was, what do we need to do in the future to make sure that we get enough bids?
I think the, that was an operational error on our side, to be honest with you. The, the person, it did not go to Anthem by mistake, and it should have gone, I caught it, and when we rectified the situation by having them rebid, which is essentially meant the other bidders just turned their bids back in, within, I think it was 10 days. In terms of the other carriers, the reason why they didn't bid is because they weren't competitive compared to where you are today, which means because you're running so well, they wouldn't have been able to price it to get a competitive bid in place. So it's not really anything that you guys did it all, or your claims experience not running well, it's, you're, you're running great, it's, it's just competitively compared to the market, you guys are better than the market, is the way I would interpret that.
Okay, thank you.
So on the next, any other questions? Okay. On the next slide, we detailed out a rate history for the medical and the dental, so since 2016 to the present, and you can see the rates by year. The average for the medical over that time period is .75% increase, which is much better than the market, is really phenomenal. What that does not show you is there's also $1.4 million in surpluses that New Kent County retained after the end of each of those plan years. That's not including obviously 2020, because we haven't finished the year. Through March for 2020, you're showing a surplus of $112,000. Now, keep in mind, we haven't gotten through really COVID-19 in terms of claims, and we did find out that Anthem did stop processing COVID-19 related claims from March 13th through April 1st while they reconfigured their systems. For example, they had to turn their systems from paying, not paying all of testing claims to paying all testing claims, because that was required by the, the new laws. So we don't know what the COVID claims are going to be yet, we do know how many of New Kent's covered people have been tested, and the latest reporting we have is six people. Regardless, that's a very good track record for, for five years. I didn't go back beyond that, but if you went like 2015, 2016, 2014, so on, the surplus is much larger, and, and the story is even better, but I wanted to make sure that we had a relevant time period, so, but that's good. Dental is 1.36%, the surplus exceeded 45,000 for that time period. We are running a deficit this plan year of about $4,000, we'll talk about that later. Since we were talking about COVID, we did have our actuaries create a cost estimator for what we expect COVID claims to run for New Kent, and it had a varying range of it, the minimal spread, which is, we think is most credible, we think the moderate spread and the high spread are not, we think they're very, they're high, but just for your reference point, the minimum spread is of the virus, we anticipate about $4,700 in claims. I think it's probably going to be, that or a little bit higher, but it's going to be close to that. If we have a moderate spread, it's about $244,000 is what the actuary is projecting. The reason why we bring this up is that's the biggest question on everybody's mind, and do we feel confident, we do, that having a zero increase or a flat renewal is not too aggressive considering the claims projections, the renewal and the surplus year to date. So if for some reason that we had, where let's say claims did go in the wrong direction and dramatically, we do have the surplus to lean on if need be, and that's exactly what it's for. A lot of information on that, with that slide, any, any questions, specifically any questions about the COVID-related projections?
Any questions?
Okay. All right, the next slide has your renewal benefits, if you will, current and renewal, so the benefits are at the top, enrollments in the middle, and then you have the renewal rates at the bottom. So it didn't do any benefit changes, except for a mandated benefit change in red, and that is the out-of-network, out-of-pocket maximum became two and a half times of the in-network maximum out-of-pocket. Your out-of-network utilization is very minimal, I think you have 99.4% of your utilization is in-network. We continue to offer the same two plans, which is a point-of-service plan is the high option, if you will, and it has a $30 copay for primary care, 50 for specialists, a $1,000 deductible and then 80/20 to a maximum out-of-pocket of 4,500 and 9,000. You couple that with a health reimbursement arrangement, or HRA, to cover the second half of the $1,000 deductible, so the effective deductible for the employees is $500. The other option is the high deductible health plan that is paired with a health savings account, is that it has a $3,000 deductible, 6,000 family, and then it provides 100% coverage except for prescription drug co-payments. It has a maximum out-of-pocket of 4,000 for an individual and 8,000 for anybody with dependents. It also has a contribution from the school board of $500 towards the HSA, followed by a $500 per dollar match, so $1,000 can be put in the employee's HSA account. Our goal this year is to continue to grow that as much as possible, especially considering the environment, but you have about 24 enrollees in the deductible health plan and HSA, so we'll, we'll talk about that more later in the presentation. All right, any questions? Next slide please. The next slide shows your claims experience over the last 24 months graphically, it's the same renewal, or same period as your renewal. The current plan year started in October, 2019, started with a deficit in October of 58,965, then we had a couple of really good months, and then through the end of February, it was an $84,000 surplus, and as I stated earlier, March ended up being a little bit more of a surplus, and so it raised it to 112,630. So claims are running very well. Next slide please. These are your large claimants over $25,000 in this plan year, so keep it in mind, if you look at the past 12 months, I think we said we had 27 claims, but since October we have 12 claims, so halfway through the year, or close to halfway through the year, that tracks with the numbers we've seen in the past, and there are zero claims over the stop loss of 110,000. Next slide. So based upon the claims experience and the underwriting projections in our actuarial review, we recommend no increase in the rates that you see on the next page, on this slide, and that's for both plans, and the, this includes keeping the same benefits as well. So the next slide shows you contributions, and it shows you by health level as well, or wellness level, through the, the wellness program with Peak Health, which we'll talk about that in a little bit detail in a second. We illustrated the contributions staying the same, but we wanted to recommend that the management team with New Kent County Public Schools be able to retain the flexibility to revisit the contribution strategy to further enhance the, or make the deductible health plan more attractive, and thereby growing the enrollment. What that would involve is maybe tweaking some, some dollar amounts in other tiers with other plans in order to make it more attractive or less costly for people to enroll in the deductible health plan. And that may also involve it looking at the rate differential between wellness levels as well, so just wanted to try and keep the flexibilities we file as of these contributions. I believe we did this last year as well, just to try to fine tune things. Any questions about that?
No questions.
So let's talk about dental. Dental is, again, recommended that it be a 5.5% increase, we are running a little bit of a deficit this year, about $4,600 year to date. The last couple of years, we've ran a slight deficit at the end of the plan year, so a rate adjustment we feel is, is warranted and, and it makes sense. It would increase, the total increase annually would be about $11,135, there are no changes in benefits, and the ASO fee, or the administrative service fee used to pay Delta, so in dental you have two, two types of costs, you have your claims cost and you have your administrative cost to pay the claims. The ASO fee is gonna remain at $5.60 per employee per month, and then you have the rates listed below by product, as to what the impact would be. So you can see from the impact for the employee only, let's say for the EPO, which would be the least costly plans with the lowest impact, goes from 2412 to 2571. The premier plus, which would be the more expensive plan, if you look at the family impact, so this would be worst-case scenario, would go from 8998 to 9592, so right around $6. So not a dramatic impact when you're talking about dental, but nonetheless an increase.
Is the, is the administrative service charge in, included in the, the prices at the bottom in the chart?
Yes, yes it is. Great question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, let's go to the next slide please. So we get that, did, did, uh, let's try that again, we get down to our recommendations, and I'm gonna actually start at the bottom, because I, I think this is important, we were in the midst of all the happenings with COVID, we were thrown in somewhat a curveball, where Peak Health, who's been the, the wellness management company for your wellness program, was notified New Kent via us that they were closing their doors, and it, basically, it had started on their west coast clients where they weren't allowed on-site to do testing on employees because of COVID-related concerns. As it turns out, I think it was last week, we got, we were notified that McGriff Employee Benefit Services, which is one of our partner, one of our companies, has, is working with Peak Health to buy that company. So our recommendation as far as that goes, just because of all the uncertainty right now, is to remain with Peak Health for the upcoming, for the 2020 plan year. That being said, even before Peak Health notified us that they were closing their doors, we had already explored some different options with different providers and different levels of service, I think you guys are aware of that, including an on-site clinic. We would like to continue those discussions, but keep Peak Health engaged at least at a time where things become a little more certain and we can revisit that. McGriff owning Peak Health has no bearing on making the right decision and making the right recommendations for you guys, and I, I just want to make that perfectly clear, because that's really important. Just like if McGriff handles your HRA or your HSA, if, even though we own that, those entities, we have clients where we actually deal with other entities for the same service. So I, I just want to be crystal clear and clear, absolutely transparent about the ownership there, but I also want to make sure you know that we're going to do the right thing by you guys, and I, I think we need to revisit the wellness when things have calmed down and look at other vendors, so. That being said, the medical recommendations, we recommend current, funding at the current rates, which is basically .6% above expected, subject to finalizing the reinsurance cost, which will happen about mid-July. No change to reinsurance stop loss limits of 110,000 for the specific stop loss, or 125% of the aggregate. And then recommending reviewing the contribution strategy to keep overall costs flat, but further enhancing that deductible health plan and health savings account contributions. Dental recommend increasing the rate by 5%, which increases the employee cost by 5.5% because it's an employee-paid benefit, no changes in the ASO, or administrative services fee. So the last piece is the Vision and the Guardian worksite, we are still marketing both of those, we had not originally intended to market the Vision, but as we looked closer at the renewal and the offerings with Anthem and some other providers, we thought it would be best to look at marketing the Vision to enhance the network and possibly have some offset if you end up, offset in terms of pricing, if you, if you get a competitive bid. The, and that would include Anthem in that, in that, the folks we sent it to. We also are marketing the consumer benefits with Guardian, that are currently with Guardian, and we'll have, report back on those, which we should have those bids back within the next week. The disability with standard is in a rate hold, or rate guarantee, so that is, we did not bid that out, I think we just bidded, bidded that last year, so. Any questions on our recommendations for the slide?
So the bottom line is everything is the same, except for dental, but that's with the employee base for that.
Yeah.
We will contribute to that, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? There aren't any, so good, we have a few more on the left. Okay.
Let's go to the bench.
Yeah. Yeah. Go to that. Yeah. Um, Mr. Davis, we appreciate your going over this with us this evening, and it appears our board members do not have any additional questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, bud.
And you as well. All right, take care.
Okay. Um, some healthcare, thank you for all you were. Superintendent?
Yes, let's, that's a great segue from healthcare, we've got some good news on healthcare, that is the end of the good news in the budget, so, and it's going to join me up here, still quite a few moving parts, we wanted to update you today, talk you through some potential changes, changes in funding and changes in what we recommend for budget, and then we come back for you at the maybe or approval. The county has their budget tentatively slated to be approved May 27th, so our budget will be approved ahead of that, so we're working from the budget book with the following changes, so.
Just a couple of reminders, just kind of where we are right now, if you'll remember, in our original recommended budget, we had 1.4 million increase in state funding, and with the House and Senate updates and the final governor's recommendation prior to 2019, we were actually to the good 228,2, which would have been really great to use for one of the things that we had in store, but that's obviously not going to happen. We did get a preview of the governor's amendments and have an estimated impact to New Kent, but we have not received our final cap pool yet, we have to receive it 10 days out from last Tuesday at the latest, so I am hopeful that it will come any day now. But with that being said, because we didn't have the increase in the 228 built into our recommended budget, now that we're having to cut back, at least luckily we're not having to cut anything with, with regards to that, makes me never really looked at it, to the budget at that point. Just a couple other things, updates, we are looking at a regional sped funding line, Dr. Pollard and myself, when we get our cap pool, she's been communicating a lot with VDOE on this particular line item, so we may shift a little bit of revenue there. So with the state funding, we're looking at, we think around $200,000 in reductions, that's what we're planning for until we have our cap pool. Obviously here you, you can see the history of the county funding, our request to the county was $925,000, when we met on March 13th with the board supervisors, we were allocated $500,000 in the original recommended budget from the county, and then when we met, or attended a meeting on April 17th, we were flat funded in that meeting. So we are looking to cut $925,000 at this point out of our budget.
Can we, so we were flat funded, but there were some additional?
So the $500,000 that we were, the $500,000 we were funded was, they were in two buckets, so one was 200,000 in operating, and then 300,000 was designated for the new school, so that's, that's total of 5,000. The initial conversation we had about being flat funded was on the 200,000, the conversation has shifted, so now that 300,000 is not available, so that means neither one of those buckets, which was all part of the original 925,000 that was requested.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and you'll see a, a little bit of a recommendation when we kind of get to the bottom of the stage, but with those potential reductions required, here's a list of potential reductions we've considered. Obviously our planning principal and planning secretary, which I think we had in there for four months, so that's not our annual salary, our benefit total, but those two line items, obviously we're not going to need those in next year's budget, even if we had a mid-year opening of some sort, that would still be in FY '22. Salary increases and pay scale adjustments, this includes, if you remember, we had a This includes, if you remember, we had set aside a certain dollar, not just for the teacher's scale specifically. And then also we're reducing, to include, to hold on to a cost of living increase. And so that totals $404,198. We just heard from Matt and our healthcare renewal, and with that, we'll have a savings of $146,493.
Just remembering in our proposed budget, we had a 5% increase in healthcare. We were just building that buffer in. So when we got the news last week that it was going to be flat, it was just a welcome. Bit of good news as we try to balance million-dollar debts.
We do still have increases in there for increased participation. Of course, we don't know what that might look like now, also with COVID-19 spouses. And, and so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Support position adjustments. This includes two positions that we were moving to 12-month, holding them both at a minimum length for next year, and also two support positions that were being requested, shifting those to mid-year funding, which allows a couple things. I don't know if Mr. Nichols wants to discuss that at all.
So we had two support positions for division-level support. What we essentially are proposing in this is we would move them to a January hire, which would give us a six-month buffer to see where sales tax is, see where the government general assembly of several funds that are now unallotted that could be given back to us over the course of this year. So instead of hiring those two positions, we waited until January. If things are not in good shape at that point, and we find we can't go another year, that is additional revenue that we would have there. So really postponing that for six months and coming back to that decision later, that's a significant savings for us. So we're working internally on plans to cover that work in the near term. The county is deploying a similar strategy with their assistant, their assistant technology position. So it's kind of mirroring some of the work that they're doing.
The next to the high school and elementary school counselor. The governor has reduced the appropriation for the school counselors that was in the budget. So that isn't something that's unallotted and could come back. That is an item that actually was reduced. So we're taking those two positions out at this time. And then one elementary school teacher position, we did have one that was intended for growth. We still have one that's in the budget, and so we're just reducing that one out at this time. You'll see below that we are looking and having conversations with the county and hopefully the board supervisors on possibly reaching back into the $300,000 that had been previously provided for new school positions now with COVID and.
Looking at the COVID-19 and school closure, kids being up five to six months, we know kids are going to come back with gaps in learning. Talk about the summer slide, now we've had almost, we'll have almost a happy year. Although our teachers are doing a great job in continuity of learning plan. We would like, and I've requested formally from the county, two additional elementary teachers, one at Watkins and one at New Can Elementary, to be able to fill those gaps and provide intervention. So it could potentially lower class size, or it can give you another person to work on reading intervention, that intervention and so forth. So that's about $144,000. So that request is into the county. We have not heard back at this time. I'm hoping to have information for you tonight on that. That will give us some flexibility. We know, at least for the next two school years, we'll be closing gaps, filling gaps, and trying to do that work. K-12, we thought this would be an opportunity to work creatively with both of our principals to provide that exercise. So we're hopeful for that.
Do we not think that that's going to be a problem at middle school and high school as well?
The way, yes, it definitely will be a problem at the middle and high school. But the way the content is set up and the schedule, we can work some of those through schedule. Versus you have your first-grade teacher or your third-grade teacher. So it's, so absolutely, and we can share with the plans for middle and high school. We have several plans depending on when we get to start school. We have the summer plan, if we're able to come back early. We have a section for start plan and then up throughout the year. Ideally, to have additional intervention in middle school would be great. But really looking at our youngest learners at this point. Good question.
We're going to be out of, with the counselors, and then we've talked about this, with state mandates. Will this still put us in the compliance of what they want to do with that $100,000? How all that works by eliminating these two positions?
We'll be in compliance for the next, for the buying, based on the current read of the next two years. We'll definitely be in good check, in compliance with it. This was an effort, as you know, they were trying to get to $100,000 to $250,000 at one point, and that never shifted. We're going to add an additional counselor at the high school, which will give us some more flexibility to do some different things. And then the elementary school level as well, a different type of counselors, kind of do some additional work. But once the funding was pulled for that, another funding was pulled as well. We had to kind of pull those at the same time. So compliance, yes, the work we really want to get into, we're still going to need to talk about that in the years ahead.
So obviously, some of the items that were unallotted include the compensation supplement, which hopefully will come back onto the table at some point, and maybe we can revisit that depending on state funding. Another one that impacts us, expansion of school meals, where they were planning on paying the reduced students, basically the kind of free students. So we have talked about that internally and doing that in New Can outside of state funding. So that was a nice thing that we were looking to do, but we'll cross that margin when we get to it. One thing, the CARES Act, the stimulus funds that we're estimating to get $188,602.36, that we have talked about, things that we have already purchased that may need to be reimbursed through those funds. And that might be some additional support for the middle and high school. We had a call with FEMA, what we could reimburse through FEMA, and Mark and what she does have on that. We're thinking more, it would be some more of our cleaning initiatives. It has to be very specific to what you're legally responsible for protecting the community. And it's, it beyond some of those things, so.
We've asked SSC, our custodial service provider, to provide a bill for COVID-19-specific cleaning, even though it's within our contract. So really working the operating budget, but also the FEMA fees and then stimulus funds. So we could look at something in middle school for a year. We just don't want to use, we should not use that stimulus funding for operating pieces. But we could look at technology infrastructure. Are there some things that we could, we could do? So I've talked to guys a little bit about, you know, we're putting Wi-Fi on two buses to park in different parts of the county. We could expand some of that work. We could expand some other infrastructure work there. We can, some child nutrition work. We completely altered what we do with child nutrition. I don't think that's something we should go back on. I think it's something we should keep pushing forward, and that'll take an investment. Leslie and her team have done an incredible job. Every, every superintendent's called up on, people talk about people not wanting to come in and not wanting to do this. You know, every, well, any day you go over there, they're, they're, one, doing phenomenal work, and finding great service. They're incredibly safe, but they're having great time doing it. The music is blasting, and they're dancing, and so we want to continue to feed the kids through the summer and then, you know, beyond it's, people will feel the impact for quite some time, and we want to be there for them.
So if you cut the requirements out for, for the lunches, are you, do you have a sheet that you're going off of to monitor and make sure that people are, who are getting reduced or free lunches in the school system? Are those same people showing up? Or how are you being able to, to monitor that, and making sure that they're still getting services that they were getting school as well?
That, that's a great question, probably something we can do.
Yeah, we, what the type of seating that we were doing in origin, there's different options that we can do. And the one that we are utilizing is the most flexible. They're just telling you, we don't have to ask your name or who you are, as long as you're under the age of 18 and with a parent, then we will provide you food. You're not even having to be school-aged. One thing that Leslie and her team have done a great job of is working with administrators, to know if there are folks that are in need of food, that we're contacting them. If we know they're not coming out, we are, just making sure that we're taking care of them. One thing that is coming through is EBT cards from the state for all of the pre-certified, the child nutrition free students. And they said on a call last week that there's only two vendors to make the cards. So, and they can only make $10,000 in a day. So there's like a five-week delay on getting the cards out. But those will be automatically mailed to those homes. So we're hoping that within a few weeks, they've been trying to get different options from USDA to use gift, gift cards or Visa cards or anything. And they're, they're being very specific on the type of card that they have to use. But they're, they're working through that.
Okay, New Can Elementary has restarted their backpack food pantry program with specific families. So looking at some of those, but I mean, that's a, I mean, a great point to think about our families too. Typically, are they able to, we are doing behind-the-scenes. We have it on everything we post. If you can't get to us on a Monday call, Leslie, email. I know they did 20-plus deliveries today. So if we do, if we find a family that's in that need, we can make it happen and get to them. So you can see.
So we're, you know, we still have a little work to do.
Yeah.
We're not quite balanced. We still, that's if we do all of those recommended things. What we wanted to do is the General Assembly met on the 22nd, and today's the 27th. We wanted to provide you the most up-to-date information, plus our thoughts on cuts and how we can make this balance.
So do we have an idea up to this point with the, with the closures? Operationally, do you have a projection of how much money we will potentially save through the closures that will help offset some of this deficit operationally that we can hopefully balance that?
So there's two parts to that. One is the revenue side. So our, our one, I'd say our most concerning thing right now is sales tax revenue. And we won't know that, and there's a two-month lag on that. So I actually won't really know how March was impacted until May, and then into April until June. And we do it through two months back into each fiscal year. So we'll actually through August be this fiscal year. So we're waiting patiently and watching that. And the other side of that is really typically your year-end savings aren't necessarily used for operating budget expenses moving forward. So we have started to think through some creative things, things that we can do now to help us save for next year. But it's not as easy as saying, you know, we need another $100,000, let's just save it and send it next year.
Have you seen the savings from like the fuel and the electrical? Have you got any feedback from, from Mergen or from Tim?
Yeah, we haven't because of the lag and when those things are imported into our old financial system and then re-imported into our new financial system, we don't have that. I think y'all have through February. So once we have our March, we will, I think we'll see more of that in that time.
So that's something that late spring, early summer, we could, could have a really accurate amount and understand what that savings was.
One thing that we have done is our salary savings right now because that is something that now we know, we feel very comfortable we're not paying any additional hours or, you know, not really going to have any new hires or, you know, folks leaving at this point. So you're very easily able to project out what your salary and benefit total will be. So we've looked at that. It's just for that other side that we have to wait.
Potential savings and substitute costs, we were running, we were running over. So this kind of helps us, we'll see how much that is. And then it's a conversation with the county as far as using this money next year, whether it's in a project or, unfortunately, we don't just get to carry it over into next year. We have to work through, the county like we always do with our transactions. But really starting to look at what are some things in next year's budget that, so Tim, for example, Tim's working through projects, he's working through maintenance lists. But is there something we have an eye on for next year that we can go ahead and pay for?
So I guess we're still on track to still put the lights on the football field. I guess I was going to ask you about that. I mean, that project can actually give them half. We don't have to wait till June, nobody is, and usually gets to spring.
It is going forward. It's had its first roadblock, as we knew it would. They already navigated that in the bracket. So they're, they're rolling on that. It's really a order and waiting. So that piece should be up and ready, hopefully we'll have.
So we may have some transition stories at the next meeting. We're going to sit and read with Tim and go through all of his project lists for current year and next year. And if we feel like we can ship some things to prior to June 30, we may ask you to move some funding in the current year over, and then the funding that was set aside for next year, maybe putting that back into some side.
One of the projects that Tim brought before us earlier this year was they took the George Watkins roof and broke it in sections. Well, we've completed that section. There's nobody in the school road right now. We can go forward with the second section. We have money that we can transfer. So there'll be things like that, so we can keep that moving.
A couple of things, not so much related to the budget, but related to the kinds of things that we're talking about in terms of looking, looking at this year and then looking ahead. One of the things that would really be helpful at an upcoming meeting is looking at student-teacher ratios and letting us know on, based on the growth, what we look like, what, what were those ratios this year? And then what are, what are our projected ratios next year? And so associated with that, what's our plan for trailers? What's, when are we going to do it? Where are we going to put them? Just some information, because we know, we know we're heading in that direction.
John McCree and I talked about that. Tim and John and I talked about those pieces, so.
And then the other two things are really more related to, and I, other board members may want to say something. I just am absolutely amazed at what the teachers have done, what administration has done, what you've done, what this team has done. I just, it's just incredible, the type of support that our community and our families are showing each other. What would be great is to know what, when we hear about, when we hear all kinds of things in terms of what might happen with regard to COVID, what kinds of plans are we thinking about long-term? What does, you know, what does next year look like? It's not something that you have to be doing, but if you could just be giving us some information about what are some lessons learned and some things that we could be doing. And then one of those actually came up, it was a thought today, and that is, you know, teachers are doing an awful lot of academic work. Are we doing any online physical activity, sports? Do we have any, any plans for students who are members of teams that want to keep up? You know, and when we get back together, they'll be able to do that. So what's, what's our athletic department's plan with regard to providing students support online?
I did, a friend of mine in the county far west, their athletic department's, you know, continuity of learning. They're doing continuity of athletics. So they're sending, you know, here's, and colleges are doing it with athletes too. Here's a, here's a plan, here's the workout for the week, here's the, here's the challenge. You know, we've challenged all our staff to do the strides for schools 5Ks. I mean, there's lots of ways that you can do those pieces. To your point about different scenarios, I would like to at the May Work session. I agree with the board. We're working on three, at least three different scenarios. One that allows us to come back in summer. So what does summer look like that it's never looked like before? And it could end up being all three of these scenarios. So summer, then it's the start of school. So the start of school needs to look different at all levels because not, even if we run a summer school, not every kid that needs to be there will end up being there every day. But we know they will day one, so what does day one look like? And then the third scary part of scenarios, we open and we close again. So how do we, how are we ready for that? And there are lots of different variations within all of those, so we can definitely bring that forward. By the May Work session, we'll have a skeleton for you guys to kind of look at. There's lots of interesting talk across the country about standard schedules. And what does that look like? Well, one of the models with double transportation cost is it being AM and a PM. Not sure we want to go down that road. Not sure that's the best road, but if we don't talk about all those roads right now, well, and down the road, that's most convenient. So we don't want to do that. So we can absolutely.
Awesome. So that all factors in, social distance, potential of social distancing and.
Yes, so.
And that brings up a good point, something we were going to talk about tonight. One of the things I noticed is that the, the camera really gives a very distorted view of what we look like right now. So like if I put my hand out, I am so far away from everybody. Yeah, really. So, I mean, I do think that that, so we are practicing social distancing and watching our numbers here when we need. So, I mean, I do think that that, so we are practicing, um, social distancing and watching our numbers here when we need. So, um, Ross, thank you for all you're doing to help us.
I have a question about numbers. Kindergarten registration obviously didn't happen in person. And the word has been that, you know, the information would be provided towards the end of April. What's that looking like? Is that will obviously affect a lot of our numbers?
Kindergarten registration, and I, I may pass it to the voice that's off screen right now. Kindergarten registration will go live on the 30th. It will be virtual. Uh, we're working through Power School to, to make that process happen. Anything on that, Ross?
Um, well, we, yeah, I mean.
Thank you.
You hit on the virtual. We are also working on an option where parents can, or families can request a copy be mailed to them.
Yeah.
And as we know, some will not be able to reach it online. But, um, yeah, we're, right now, we're sitting in Power School's very lengthy help queue. Uh, to get our, the online, we already had it ready to go to start of last, this school year. And everybody knows what started this school year was like technology wise. So, um, it was just a matter of reworking that, but, um, hoping to be there by, was the 30th, is that Thursday? Yeah, so hoping to be there by Thursday.
Yeah.
We, we have a parent to grab to go ask about it. So if you think I'm incredibly prepared for that question, I'm not. I got the information from Ross earlier today and just remembered it.
So what else do you have to do in the buildings? The parent, the teachers have been back in.
So we're working through the teacher process now. So the high school has completed the teacher piece to close out rooms. The initial way the teachers come in were to get materials so they could do continuity work. Uh, so this was to actually close that classroom so we can begin summer clean and, and do an extensive process. So the high schools have been closed out and middle school is in getting ready to begin the process or is in the process and the elementary piece. Coming from behind that, we're working on with, um, the administrators to do a student pickup process.
For all the lockers and to clean out the lockers and.
There's a lot of stuff.
Uh, and it will likely be by schedule in increments and communicated well in advance for families. We've run that process on a much smaller scale with medications. The good, bad news is kids don't really use lockers anymore. Uh, I had the gift of the 16 year old. Um, so I said, hey, do you need to go get your stuff? You know, I've never used my locker at all. So lockers more and more becoming obsolete, but we do have, uh, folks with stuff in gym lockers. We have requests with some salt here. Uh, so we'll navigate those pieces in the next meeting.
Well, the schools have been doing a good job getting those refund checks.
Yes.
That's very efficient.
We've been processing the refunds and, and working through it. Uh, I, I will tell you, the team has done this job because you cannot think of every scenario. You get a call and they come up with this stuff. And it's a, uh, we stood outside of the high school today for a while brainstorming a bunch of different scenarios and refunds and what we could do with fees and different things like that. So, uh, we're making this all up and the community has been tremendous far with this. So really appreciate it.
Okay. So the next item we're gonna be talking about is the, um, special education plan.
And special education place, you guys solved that plan and grant last meeting, so this is the second reading. But the partners joined us.
Yes. Um, so this is the second reading of the grant. I just have one more thing I want to say before, um, we mentioned, I mentioned last time that we do have a new component to our grant, which is the private schools. Now we have a private school in New Kent. And I would like to talk about that a little bit more at the work session. I typically do an overview, especially at the work session, May or June, just to talk about how that works and the requirements around that, how the funding happens. Um, the funding is based on the December 1st child camp, which is a special education date, um, that generates the money. And so there are lots of pieces involved with that. And because it's new, I would like to sort of talk about that piece a little bit more at the work session. I'm still learning a little bit about myself, to be honest with you, because we haven't had this situation. I don't think we've had a private school in New Kent. Maybe we have. Um, and so it also impacts some other federal programs. So just want to pull together some information about that for the work session.
And we did mention this directly in the conversation, we talked about flexibility, but Diane and her team, Dr. Potter and her team have been given very limited flexibility.
Zero, how about that?
Zero waivers from the state, zero waivers. So to still operate special education, stay in timelines, stay in compliance, serve kids. Um, you know, they just keep creating solutions and opportunities for kids.
It's going, going pretty well so far with parents of being very receptive to extended timelines for evaluations and things like that. Um, Mr. Nichols mentioned summer school. And, um, that's what I'm working on right now is our extended school year program that we are required to provide for our students with disabilities, looking at different scenarios, different dates. And, uh, starting in July versus starting in June like we normally do and getting those IP's and things like that. Looking at whether if we don't open in the summer, then how we can provide those extended services during the school year and spread them out. So, um, definitely a lot of flexibility. I had a staff meeting last Friday and we've already talked about how we could do some things differently if we can't open this summer for our students with disabilities. But anyway, I'm up here for the second reading on the grant, but just wanted to share a few things.
Thank you. Board members, you have the opportunity to look at the, um, the plan. This is the second reading. Any questions?
Dr. Potter, I have just one question on page seven. With the, um, the agreement between the county jail. Yeah, can you just explain to me, are we providing services now?
Henrico County schools provide services. That's sort of been the agreement, um, forever, I guess, ever since the jail was, uh, built. Um, when I came into New Kent, I tried to find a copy of the agreement. I called everybody I could think of, but, um, I don't have a copy of it, but it's somewhere. And so that, that is taking place, um, within Henrico County providing that.
Gotcha. Excellent, thank you. Any other questions about that? Well, that was easy. Thank you so much. Okay, so before we move forward, um, let's go ahead and everyone's had an opportunity to, um, read, to look at the second reading of, um, just the annual special education plan. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the special education plan?
I move we approve the annual special education plan application as presented.
Okay, great, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, while we're on approvals, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding personnel matters?
I move we approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding personnel matters.
Hey, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I know opposed. So the next item on the agenda is looking at CTE. Hello, sir.
Hey, how are you doing?
This is the second read as well. Uh, at that meeting, you asked for some additional CTE information. Uh, so Dr. Bishop is here to talk about both of those.
So, uh, Julie Ellis, who is the total interim director of bridging communities, um, at this point in time is made. I and John Ogambah put this together for you. Just kind of get a, a sense of where, um, the breadth of our CTE program. So we can look at the next slide. Uh, so Julie and John both put this together and they did a great job. I'm trying to, um, take a few slides just to kind of explain what CTE really is. It's 16 different competencies from agriculture to information technology. Um, we, as a New Kent high school, have 10 of the 16 clusters. And bridging communities offers an additional three of those clusters. So as far as our students and their opportunities here at New Kent, I think we have a very good bridge and robust program.
Which, so we're.
Right.
Yeah. I'm spinning wheels.
Let, let's go through the, the whole, um, series and you'll, you'll be able to see that.
But for being a smaller school division, have 13 of the 16 career clusters. Have 13, 10 at the high school and then additional.
So, but when we say, and I think this is what's hard for us, is we don't understand what, if you say you have 13 of 16 career clusters, what does that mean? How many classes does a student take in order to qualify for, what, what qualifies for a cluster?
So let's look at, um, middle school.
Okay.
So middle school offerings right now, they are in the technology cluster. So they have, if we look at their clusters and I have another, um, if we look at this particular document with the students, we have, um, students all in information technology. It's just an easy, um, win for students. It's computers, it's, it's STEM, it really gets the students interested. Uh, it really prepares them for all those, those work, those ready skills throughout. So you need those type of skills to access the next group of, of pathways. So the next slide.
So does a student, so let me, so if a student in middle school, because they haven't at sixth grade taken the career questionnaire that they take, right? Have they taken?
They take that in seventh grade.
In seventh grade. So, so.
They go through the academic career plan.
Okay. So all students take that in sixth grade?
Not all of them. Um, in terms of digital technology foundations, um, we have, uh, 95, introduction to technology, 95 students at the middle school taking that.
So 95 out of Val?
Out of 250.
Okay. So then let's say they get to seventh grade and they take their career assessment. And the career assessment comes back and says, you'd be great in technology. Can they catch up because they missed something?
They can. All these classes are not sequenced. They're, they're not, except for the technology class, design multimedia and web technology, which is a high school credited class in eighth grade. So we have, so we have, uh, world language, algebra, geometry, um, environmental, um, science, and then the CTE class that's, is, is a high school credit. So those students, those students in that design multimedia and web technology class have taken computer solutions or inventions in, in technology somewhere in, in seventh grade as a, as a prerequisite. Because it's really has to, you have to have some skills in this design and multimedia and web technology. We have students getting some, some good stuff there. But, um, so in terms of that specific class, that's the only class that really needs a prerequisite to build upon.
Got it.
So, um, technology systems, um, can be a year long or could be a semester long class too. So students have options in terms of this as well. So those sixth grade classes are semester long classes. These are semester long classes. That design multimedia technology is a year long class.
Okay. Okay.
Okay? Next. So here are, if we tip them off, we have business and marketing. We have some information technology and we have technology education. So this is like, these are three different clusters that we have. Marketing, uh, Ms. Fisher and, and Ms. Peterson really work with this particular group. Mann's is this. And then we have Ogambah is really that teacher who teaches that, that group of, um, clusters, so to speak. So students who get a, get a completer, take one, two classes in one of these clusters. They become a completer. A completer is just any student who takes two classes in one cluster over the course of their high school career or middle school, if they have that vision.
A completer is someone who's just taken two courses, right?
Two CTE courses within the same cluster.
In the same cluster.
In the same cluster.
So a cluster is the box.
Cluster is a box. It's one of those pie charts on that chart, is that, that rainbow called 16 different clusters.
So if I take intro to marketing and then I take principles of this, I could, I would be a CTE completer. Uh, and really looking for kids to be in, in the CTE pathways, to be completers instead of taking 13, they wouldn't have room for 13, but 13 different courses versus getting a little deeper. You can be a completer in multiple pathways.
Do they see this? I mean, is there a pictorial for them to say, you know, I wanna, I wanna concentrate in this and this is what I think? Certainly from a college and career ready standpoint, the idea is by the time they're in, what, 10th grade, 11th grade, you want them to have an idea. So do they pictorially see this?
Their academic and career plan starts in, really, pre-academic career plan starts in the fifth grade.
Okay.
So seventh grade, they take their assessments. Eighth grade, they take more assessments in, in terms of what they want to do. Of course, that changes all the time.
Sure.
So, um, when they sit down with their counselor in, at the high school, and they sit down with them every year, they do discuss the CTE.
But do they see it like this? Like, for example, does this translate into the counseling, into, into the counselor's office? And you might not know that now, which is fine, but.
They see bits and pieces of where they, they don't see the all six, all 16.
I think they just see the electives.
They see.
They, they see.
Right, so they don't see the big picture.
And you could easily fill your, your four years with electives.
As a parent.
Versus trying to go deeper into, no, you're exactly correct.
Well, but there's, and I don't, I don't mean to psychobabble it, but there's a meta cognition level to deciding what you want to take or why you want to take it. And so it's one thing to say, okay, what are my electives? And a lot of times people go, well, that teacher's good and that teacher's fun and that teacher's easy and that's a good. But if we're talking about college and career ready, we almost want them to see like, I'd love to see this on the wall in the counselor office.
So they know there's a pathway.
Yeah, it's like, it's a great thing. I just don't know that this translates into student planning and parent planning with their kids on what they want to take.
Well, and one of the great activities, I use the term great, but I'm not sure everybody would, is to do transcript audits with the high school team and the counselors and just random sampling of your course load and let's look at electives. In a four by four scheduled environment, just mentioned that you have five opportunities for high school credit in middle school. So technically, you come into high, high school with five credits, technically it's all for one. Uh, now you have a four by four, so you have already two more opportunities. You only need 20 plus, 27, 25, depending on your diploma time. What are you doing with all those other credits? You could really get the.
You could, you really could.
Get multiple pathways.
And even, even at the middle school, when you're thinking about going to high school, I, I think we miss an opportunity to say, you, this is how far ahead you can get, right? I mean, these are some things that you can do in areas that you're interested in. Now granted, you could go down that path so long and then realize, I don't really want to do that. I want to do something else. So you want to circle balance, but, um.
Can they do multiple clusters in high school?
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
So they say business and marketing, I did those two classes, that's one cluster. Now I'm gonna go, and, and I guess my other point is, is do these clusters coincide with or merge with bridging communities? Or are these outside of bridging communities?
Outside, nursing, small engine, diesel, that's not what we, culinary we do. So there's the culinary.
Yeah. So, so, so like, again, I go back to the fact that this is a really cool picture. It'd be really cool to have a little arrow that goes out to, and if you, you know, uh, bridging communities.
We have.
We have students who take culinary with NICA, which is, uh, not a tool or a class. And they can want to take culinary one and culinary two at bridging communities. So they take three years of culinary. Okay, so they can do that and they get that dual credit in their year one and year two of culinary.
Not to take us into a whole different direction, but another great extension of this visual would be, and here's the internship and the extracurriculars.
Yeah.
Here are the three companies that currently offer for kids who have a two point one.
So yeah, so you could do intro to marketing and sports management. And then this is what you could do with that, if you complete that cluster.
And here are the businesses we've already lined up. So you can go be with the Richmond Swirls in sports management and they'll go take, I mean, that's kind of.
Right.
Big picture mapping. This is the start, but here's what we need.
But it's potential opportunities based on completion.
Yes. And then the certifications that go with each of those courses.
So if we could take the planning, because this looks great, we could take the planning and then translate it into the services that are given to students and the information given to parents, then there's a real opportunity to kind of maximize, maximize our pathways.
Ross, move to the next slide too, because that also.
Some more.
Right, yeah, there you go.
Agriculture, hospitality, um, and then education training. So. Those are those. And then the next slide is bridging communities.
Okay. Okay.
Page back is not, not like one of those offerings.
Great. So on the ones that we were just looking at, are any of those dual enrollment?
No, they are not. Not in, not in the high school.
Okay.
No. Our dual enrollment at the high school is English, biology. We have art. And those are the, those are the three dual enrollment classes. So if you look at the next, I had another document that I have, kind of, it shows kind of just the breadth of what we do in terms of our certifications as well. There you go. So these are not the number of, these are the students in the class. So they can be duplicative, because you could have a student in business law and in marketing. So that's not just students, that's students sitting in that class. But as you can see, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of students taking a lot of credentials. We don't take any credentials at the middle school level. We do, we have FBI kind of a safe internet thing that we take at the, but we have the workforce readiness. We have MOS certifications, Excel, PowerPoint. We have WISE financial literacy. We have architecture, probably the way, NOTD, Parapro, which is the same professional exam that we have for adult professions, take that. So, and then of course, bridging communities. And I'm just getting just NOTD, but there's more tests within NOTD and CTX and SURCA and NTA. So all those as well. And there's a, there's a long list of those. And those are only the students listed there that are New Kent students.
That was going to be, I wanted to, I wanted to ask about the enrollment of classes.
That's just, yeah.
Okay. Great. Okay. Awesome. And it's very helpful to put this, to give us that picture.
The clusters. And I work with the counselors to, to help with that as well.
But, and the other piece of that puzzle is the parent family. So, so work with their families so they understand all the options and decisions you make. My son is fortunate or not fortunate, when he comes up with this lecture, I know enough to go, yeah, are you sure you want to? Or you're just trying to fill a block of this kid?
Exactly.
So just want to make sure we're not filling blocks and we're great help with this.
And then the next part is just the Perkins Plan, the CTE. That is the second reading. If you have any questions with that, it is on level funding. And so we don't have the new funding for this. But we do have some good news. Bridging Communities has more funding through the Perkins Grant. We have about another $35,000 for the Bridging Communities. So we're working with that, Julie and I are working with the faculty in order to see what equipment they need.
Because the Perkins Grant is designated for certain things they could use it for.
Equipment only and, and, or field trips or professional development. But that is really, the gist of that is, is the equipment and testing as well. So that's what we use that Perkins money for. Use about $5,000 of Perkins money for testing. And then resources for the equipment and some field trips and professional development.
Are there any questions about the CTE plan? Okay, sacrificial indicated it is a second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 CTE plan as presented?
I move that we approve the 2020, 2021 CTE plan as presented.
Is there a second?
On a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no questions. Thank you so much. So, is there anything else on the agenda?
We got the data.
All right, except we want to say thank you.
Yes.
We want to say thank you to Kim Alander.
Delandra.
Yep.
Delandra.
Delandra, come on, so sorry. I've been practicing and I messed it up. But she made all of us masks and they're absolutely beautiful and they're two sided and, and they have a little, little pocket. They're just really very nice.
Yes.
So thank you so much. Okay, if there is nothing else, then the meeting is adjourned.